You're not muted if you don't know that.
Sorry.
Two minutes till broadcast begins and one minute till streaming begins. And now, Mayor, we can talk later on if you want about finding a better solution if you're unhappy with your current lighting situation.
Okay, please.
Okay, I'll follow up or Vivian will follow via email with you.
Okay.
I'll stop saying thank you.
One minute till broadcast begins and thirty seconds till the title sequence begins.
Recording in progress.
Hey, friends.
Aloha.
Hello.
Good evening.
Hello.
It means hello and goodbye.
And title sequence is beginning now. We are live.
Good evening. Happy Monday, Durham, North Carolina. Bull City, we would like to call the Durham City Council Meeting to order for this the twenty-first day of February twenty twenty-two at seven o'clock PM. We certainly want to welcome everybody in attendance here this evening, and if you will please join me in a moment of silence. All right, thank you. And at this time, I will recognize City Councilwoman Deidra Freeman to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And I don't see her here. So I'm going to turn to Councilwoman Charlie Reese to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And if you will come off.
Now you are on you.
Now you're on me.
I wish I'd known I could have gotten my flag background together, but I see in the back of the council, the mayor pro tem's office, he's got the flag there. So anyway, let's do this. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, if you will please call the robe.
Mayor O'Neill.
I am present.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton. Councilmember Caballero has an excused absence. Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
I'm here.
And Councilmember Williams.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We have one ceremonial item this evening, and I'm going to ask our mayor pro tem if he would do the honors.
Good evening, Your Honor, and thank you, ma'am, and good evening, honorable colleagues and to all who are watching this evening. And indeed, it is a great pleasure to be able to read our Black History Month proclamation on this, our last meeting of the month of February. And I consider it a distinctive honor, particularly in this year when we've crossed an historic threshold here in Durham, the election of our first African-American woman mayor. That only makes it sweeter to be able to read this proclamation tonight. A proclamation. Whereas Dr. Carter G. Woodson, the father of Black history, introduced Negro History Week in nineteen twenty-six, which was later extended in nineteen seventy-six to Black History Month. Black History Month was formally adopted to honor and affirm the importance of Black history throughout our American experience. And whereas the history of people of African heritage goes back thousands of years and includes some of the greatest, most advanced and innovative societies in the history of the history of human existence. And whereas African Americans have played a significant role in the history of Durham, North Carolina, from the early days to the pioneers to our present-day leaders in such industries as aerospace, finance, government, international trade, education, and science. And whereas Black History Month is a time for all Americans to recognize the courage and tenacity of these hard-working Americans who blazed trails for themselves and their children despite facing daunting challenges and indignities. And whereas during Black History Month, all Americans are encouraged to reflect on the rich history and teachings of Black Americans and bear witness to the progress, beauty, and achievements that they have made throughout our region. Now, therefore, I, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-two as Black History Month in Durham and hereby urge all residents to take special note of this observance. Witness my hand this the twenty-first day of February two thousand and twenty-two, Elaine M. O'Neill, Mayor of the City of Durham. And I believe Gloria DeSantos is here to receive the proclamation, so I'm going to ask Madam Clerk if you would make her hearable. Gloria, can you hear me?
Can you hear me?
There you are. Please, good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Oh, it is such a wonderful occasion to be a part of this. It is just magical to be witnessing such a magical thing happening to our city of Durham. And I just want to thank you for everything that you guys are actually doing. You're doing a wonderful job. And we really look up to you guys to keep up with the good work. And thank you so much for being a part, for allowing us to be a part of this special occasion. So thank you very much, and y'all have a good evening.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this singular honor.
Thank you for you both. Thank you for you both. I also recognize Councilman Charlie Reese at this time for announcements.
Let me get myself off mute here. Thank you. And good evening to you, Mayor O'Neill, and to all of my wonderful City Council colleagues. Good evening to our world-class city staff, led by City Manager Wanda Page, City Attorney Kimberly Mayberg, and City Clerk Diana Schreiber, and each and every one of our amazing City of Durham employees. And last, but absolutely positively not least, good evening to the people of our beloved City of Durham. For the last two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven days, you have placed in me your trust and confidence to serve as a member of this Durham City Council. I have worked as hard as I know how, every single one of those days, to earn that trust and confidence. I hope you know that. The sacred text of my personal faith tells us that to everything there is a season and a time to every purpose under heaven. Friends, my time and my season in service on the City Council have meant the world to me. But tonight, I'm announcing that my time and my season on this council will come to an end on Monday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-two, two weeks from tonight, when I hope my colleagues will vote to accept my letter of resignation from the Durham City Council. I've asked Mayor O'Neill if I could talk for just a little bit longer than usual tonight, and she has graciously agreed. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So please bear with me. After all, this is probably one of the last times y'all will have to listen to me talk. So thank you in advance for your patience. Now, why in the world am I leaving the best job I've ever had? Why would I ever want to leave this incomparable, impossible job? Well, actually, it's pretty simple. Early last year, our family business began exploring the idea of buying a European company in order to expand our business opportunities there. Two months ago, we did just that. And as a result, our chief executive officer, who also happens to be my lovely wife, Dr. Laura Helms-Reese, will need to spend a lot of time working in Europe for the foreseeable future. That has left our family with two difficult choices. Laura can be in Europe while the rest of us stay here, or we can temporarily relocate our family to Europe to be together. As you might imagine, Laura and I have spent countless hours thinking on this and praying on this. But as children so often do, our incredible kids, Rose and Gwen, reminded us what we already knew. Believe it or not, we actually like being together, and we don't want to live apart. Since I was elected to the Durham City Council six years ago, my life has mostly been about this work. And our family has largely shaped our family life to accommodate my need to do this work. Maybe that's been for the best. Maybe it hasn't. I honestly don't know. But I won't be the kind of father who continues to teach my kids by my example that their father's job must always come first. Now it's time for us to support Laura's career. And the best way to do that, to keep our family together, is for me to leave my job and for us to move to Europe with her. Friends, it's not going to surprise any of you to learn that I love serving on the Durham City Council. Anyone who's ever met me, or frankly, even heard of me, knows how much I love this job. Leaving this job is simply the hardest decision I'll ever make as a politician, but it is easily, by far, the easiest decision I'll ever make as a husband and a father. So that's that. I'm resigning as a member of the Durham City Council effective March seventh, and our family is temporarily relocating to Europe. To my council colleagues, both past and present, serving with you has been the highest privilege of my public life. Each and every one of you is a truly dedicated public servant, and I'm proud to call each of you my friend. Suffice to say, I'll be leaving this council in good hands. There's a lot more I want to say about each of you as my colleagues, but I think I'll save those farewells for our one-on-one conversations in the days ahead. And I strongly, strongly encourage y'all to do the same. We've still got work to do tonight. Now, this is normally the part in these kinds of remarks where a politician will talk about their accomplishments and office, and so I'm going to do that. The accomplishments I'm most proud of are small in the grand scheme of things, but they don't seem so small to the people involved. For one thing, I answer a lot of constituent emails. Believe it or not, I'm proud of that. And by the way, on the email front, let me just say to my colleagues that y'all are going to have to up your game quite a bit once I'm gone. Councilmember Williams cannot possibly carry this load all by himself. I'm looking at all of y'all. I have visited every public park in Durham. I've ridden every Go-Durham bus route more than once. I've biked or run every mile of trail in the city. I've picked up roadside trash on far too many of our Durham streets. I've engaged in a little light trespassing on every property that's come before this council for annexation or rezoning over the last several years. And I've hand-delivered countless of K and ninety-five masks to folks here in Durham during this awful pandemic. I'm proud of all that. I've also comforted families suffering from grief and trauma. I've helped arrange counseling and care for kids who've been traumatized by guns and violence. I once babysat for a dear friend who was in the hospital with her oldest daughter. Let me just say, the snow cones at Pelicans were a great idea. The trip to the mall was not. And I've waited on porches with families, waiting to see if the sheriff would come to evict them from their home. I'm proud of all that. And despite the fact that my wife will never, ever forgive me for it, I'm proud that on a very hot day in two thousand seventeen in downtown Durham, I stepped in front of a massively muscled white supremacist who was wearing a really, really big knife to prevent him from harming one of my constituents. But after thinking about it a lot, here's what I'm most proud of. That people across our city, in every part of Durham, from every walk of life, whether they liked me or not, whether they voted for me or not, folks have always felt that they could come to me with their problems. I've always made myself available. I've always listened, and I've always tried to help. I think folks have appreciated that. Anyway, the last thing I want to say tonight is this. Thank you to the people of our beloved City of Durham. In two thousand fifteen, you took a chance on someone with a huge desire to serve, but with very little actual experience in local government. And in two thousand nineteen, you took another chance on me, even after seeing my on-the-job performance. I will never, ever forget that you placed your trust and confidence in me to do this ridiculous, rewarding, impossible, incomparable job. I have worked as hard as I know how on each of the last two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven days to try to earn what you gave me. But I know that I am burdened with a debt of gratitude and love that I will never truly be able to repay. That's why, after tonight, and after I leave office on March seventh, and as Laura and I undertake the monumental task of moving our family halfway across the world, you won't find me in City Hall very often, but you will still find me in our beloved community, trying to make a better Durham. In fact, I'll be delivering Meals on Wheels tomorrow morning. I'll be doing Creek Cleanup with the LEB Creek Watershed Association in a few weeks, and I'll be planting trees to keep Durham beautiful in the spring. If you're lucky or unlucky, you'll even see me on the roadside picking up trash. And once our family's time in Europe is over, we'll come home to our beloved Durham, this amazing place where we've been blessed and fortunate to put down roots, where our children were born, and where we'll continue to raise them after our European adventure is done. Because Durham is our home. Even while we're living far away, Durham will always be our home. Durham today, Durham tomorrow, Durham forever. Thank you, Mayor O'Neill. That's all I have tonight.
Wow. I'm going to recognize Councilwoman Gillian Johnson at this time.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I told Charlie I'm going to save all of my "you're the best" remarks for a future meeting. But yeah, I just wanted to, you know, just take a minute to appreciate the time that we've spent on this council together. We were elected together back in two thousand fifteen. However many days you just said, which I never actually remember how many days I've been on the council as well. And it's just been an amazing time serving with you and with all of our colleagues. It's a very different kind of job than any job that I've ever had before. And I would not have gotten through it without your friendship and your support and the amazing work that you have done and that we've had the opportunity to do together. And I will have a long speech, in your honor, in the future, but I just wanted to, yeah, tell you you're great and I love you, and I wish you the best.
I'd also recognize Councilman Leonardo Williams, and I do know that Councilwoman Deidra Freeman is here as well now.
Charlie, one of the smartest people I've ever known, almost as smart as Gillian. But listen, I do not like the idea that you decide to leave when I get on council, but I understand why. That's cool. I have Gillian next to me. No, I just seriously want to thank you for your service. Thank you for your friendly debates and deliberations. And, you know, just thank you for your commitment to the City of Durham. I, you know, when I got the call from you today, the only thing I could think of at the time was, don't forget your adapters, because the adapters are so different in Europe than they are here. Your plugs will not work in the sockets over there. That's just one of those things you might want to do. But no, just wanted to go on record and say thank you for your service. Thank you for your commitment. You are a jewel to the city. Looking forward to having you back. And I did text you before your remarks to the group and said, no crying. But you did anyway. So that just simply means, that simply means you love this city, and I appreciate you, my friend. I guess I don't have to worry about you taking the easy parking spot anymore, huh? You are a jewel, man. Thank you. And never lose your spirit. It is lovable.
Councilwoman Freeman? You have to unmute yourself.
You didn't.
That might be part of it as well. I was just apologizing. I had a little technical difficulties joining this evening. But I'm here, and I am grateful I didn't miss the announcements and just acknowledging Mr. Reese. And I probably shouldn't stare at you on the screen, because then it'll look like I'm just staring off someplace. But I just want to say that in the fifteen hundred and forty days that I've served on this council, I had to do some math there to figure it out. I have definitely learned and grown and argued and fought, not physically, but just, you know, and also cheered and supported and felt supported by your work. And I do want to say thank you. I do wish you the best. I want to say Godspeed. I think your wife has been as supportive to you as you will be to her, and of course, you've been. And I know that this is not the last. And so I do want to ask that you don't change your number. That is my only request, because I will have questions, and you are often, often who I call. So thank you. Thank you for your service. I do understand, like, I don't look at it as a job. I think that's why it's so overwhelming. It's because it is in service that we do this work, and you'll always be in service. So thank you.
What are you going to do about the Christmas suit during the parade?
Somebody else is going to have to take up that mantle. I don't know what to tell you.
I'm going on mute.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I'm going to follow Councilmember Johnson's lead in having more extended comments later. But to my friend and my brother, no one in Durham politics has challenged me more and provoked me more than Charlie Reese. I got a bone to pick with him. Many people in the city may not be aware, but Charlie was actually one of the first people who talked to me about getting into elective politics here in Durham. So now he's, he got me to sign up, and now he's cutting out. Nice, nice job, brother. Listen, very quickly, Charlie has been someone that's been in a room where it happens. He didn't throw away any shots, and now he's teaching us how to say goodbye. For you and your family, brother, may your success embarrass your expectations. Know that you go with a lot of love and a lot of appreciation with the heart of a grateful city. Thank you for the conversations we've had in public and for the ones that will never make the light of day, but were just as impactful and just as important. I love you, and I love what you said. Easy decision, hardest decision you made as a politician, easiest decision you made as a father and a husband. What a great, great teaching. And you quoted the book of our faith, so let me just give it right back to you. May God bless you and keep you. May His countenance follow you. May you find peace wherever your feet trod. Love you. Talk to you soon.
Councilman Reese, I too will have longer comments today, but I just want to let Durham, North Carolina, know how I've been treated by this gentleman right here. What you see is what you get. Charlie, from the moment I walked in the door, he greeted me with gifts, wisdom, straight talk, and he's maintained that throughout. And I, I'm going to miss you, my friend. I'm going to miss you. When he came in here this morning to tell me that, the first thing I said, Charlie, I'm going to cry. He said, no, no, don't cry. I am making this decision really for my family. And that is Charlie. We are all extended family for him. You know, Durham is really extended family for him, but his wife and his kids, I met them, the kids at the parade, they're the apple of his eye. And so he is true to who he says he is. He is family first, and for that, you have my utmost respect. And we will miss you, but we know that we can always call on you. And yes, he does answer all of the emails that I'm probably about three weeks behind on. So we love you. Durham loves you, and thank you for your service. So, okay, y'all, we have a meeting tonight. And first things first, we're going to recognize Councilwoman Gillian Johnson at this particular moment. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is announcements, right? Thank you. So we have a resolution on our consent agenda, supporting the forgiveness of student loan debt. We have a resident who is here to speak on that resolution, and so as to not pull it from the consent agenda, I was hoping that she could speak during this announcements portion.
Yes, ma'am, unless there are objections from other members of council, seeing none.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Clerk, if you can make Mary O'Kline's microphone active.
Yep. Hi, everyone. Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Good evening, Mayor O'Neill, Mayor Pro Tem, Middleton, and City Council members. Thank you so much for the opportunity to make these brief remarks about this resolution. My name is Mary O'Kline. I'm actually a current city employee. I work as a business services administrator in the Transportation Department, but I am speaking to you this evening as a resident of Durham, a student loan holder, and the originator of this resolution, which I am so pleased is being presented to council this evening. While this resolution on its own won't solve the current debt crisis facing our country, it does take an important step in the direction of urging our president to take allowable executive action to relieve the burden of student debt for millions of Americans. With this resolution, the Durham City Council is calling upon the federal government to cancel current student loan debt held by the federal government and begin the process of transitioning higher education to a public good by reducing or eliminating cost. The timing on this resolution could not be more urgent or necessary with the temporary moratorium on loan payments after several extensions set to expire on May first of this year. Student debt is an issue of racial and gender equity. On average, Black students are more likely to borrow student loans to attend college and borrow, on average, more money than white students. Black students who earned a bachelor's degree have a default rate of nearly four times higher than similarly situated white peers. And women hold nearly two-thirds of our nation's student loan debt, with Black women accruing, on average, more debt than other women. Because of the gender pay gap, it's more difficult for women to pay back their debt. And because debt directly affects one's ability to build generational wealth, this leaves Black and Brown people and women less able to purchase a home and set their families up for future success, which exacerbates the already widening income gap in this country. Student loans are unique in the loan world because of their high interest rates and lack of options if a borrower becomes unable to pay. While interest rates for student loans have fallen in recent years to about five point eight percent, if you borrowed federal loans back in two thousand and six, your interest rate is set at about six point oh five percent. And if you're still carrying a loan balance from nineteen eighty, your interest rate is set at fourteen percent. Those high interest rates mean that you can be making diligent monthly payments on your loan, but still actually increasing your overall balance, leaving you unable to get out from underneath your loan. Student debt is also almost impossible to discharge in bankruptcy, and your options if you are unable to pay back your loans are slim. Durham's economy is strong, part in, due in part to its highly educated workforce. About forty-eight point eight percent of adults in Durham hold a bachelor's degree or higher, but this has come at significant cost to some Durham residents. A survey in two thousand nineteen of about fifty cities across the nation ranked Durham as number one for having the highest student debt burden with an average amount of forty-seven thousand nine hundred and fifty-five dollars. While it is true that obtaining a bachelor's or higher degree increases your lifetime earning potential, inflation and rising prices of everything, especially homes and vehicles, is reducing income available to make loan payments. Durhamites, Carolinians, and Americans have been better off financially during this payment moratorium period, and resuming payments without any loan cancellation or action would cause significant economic damage, not only to individuals and families, but also to our newly recovering national economy. If we're serious about increasing economic opportunity for Americans, canceling student debt would be a highly effective action to move us in the right direction. Thank you so much for your time this evening and for serving our wonderful city. And Councilmember Reese, just learning of your leaving us this evening. So thank you, especially as a city employee, for all of your hard work for our city. Thank you so much, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Klein. And just to follow back up, I did want to make sure that I ask on the record, Mayor Pro Tem Mark Anthony Middleton, if he would assume the leadership of the Procedures Committee and to work with Councilwoman Johnson on a timetable to fill Councilmember Reese's seat at this time. Okay?
We admire that. Thank you.
All right. I'd also, I think I saw Councilwoman Freeman, and then I saw Councilwoman, Councilman Williams for any further announcements. Councilwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to take a moment and just acknowledge our former employee who has passed yesterday, Lester Williams, and his family. I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of his passing. And just to just highlight, in his passing of lung cancer, how much of the weight that we're carrying in our community. Just knowing that COVID is one isolating and also can cause the death of family and friends, but there are so many other things that folks are carrying in this moment. And I just wanted to make sure to highlight that in this time of great grief and great isolation, it's hard. I just wanna call on our neighbors and make sure that folks are just being vigilant and reaching out to folks in our community. And I also just wanted to also say, I have a few notes. Just acknowledging that today's President's Day. I do wanna note tomorrow being George Washington's birthday, just giving a just a moment to just say happy birthday. And also to our late, great Nina Simone, whose birthday was today. I noted as well that I know that gun violence continues to be a factor in our community and that the folks are hard at work. And I want to please continue, please encourage you to continue sharing your proposals. I've been receiving proposals via email just in passing, and folks are sharing ideas. And I think it's important that we continue to do that, just knowing that it's not gonna be a one-size-fits-all solution. It's gonna take lots of different solutions.
Lester Smith.
I'm sorry. Yes, and you heard Mr. Corrected Mia Lester Smith, Mr. Smith. And I just know that my focus has been on shifting and to prevention. And just noting, there was, there are plenty of opportunities to support mothers who are pregnant, with young babies, all the way through to early adulthood. I just wanna make sure that folks are looking for those opportunities to be supportive, and that was all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Councilwoman Williams, did you have any announcements?
I did, Madam Mayor. Thank you for this time. And let me preface this with, I'm enjoying being on this council because we care so much in a similar way, but we also all are so different. And I love also that this is a representative body, and tonight, this sort of hits home with me, obviously, when I read these words. But I've been getting a lot of emails. I'm sure you all have too. And I think we all know the impacts of COVID and what it has done to our community over the last two years. We are responsible for 320,000 people, 320,000-plus people in this city. So, we have to, we have to make our decisions in a very weighted way. And I've shared that with my colleagues and my friends on both sides of how we come out of this COVID situation. And I express that just to make sure that everyone understands, you know, what's on our shoulders as an actual deciding or decision-making body. But I think what really hit me is when I, sometimes I thought I was the only one dealing with this. And I got an email, and I wanna read it verbatim. "I will be direct and tell you that I have approximately 12 weeks of cash on hand. Then we are finished. We currently employ about 60 people in our restaurants, from full-time salaried employees to those who earn an hourly wage. The hourly wages for our employees are $18 to $21 per hour." That is what's happening across our city with our colleagues in the restaurant industry, but not just restaurants, across the board, small businesses. COVID has taken a swing at our local economy like none other before, like none other before. And I think what's so tough to deal with, you know, is the fact that, you know, we were the first city to shut down because we do it right in Durham. And it appears we're gonna be the last one to open up because we do it right in Durham. We wanna make sure that our folks are taken care of. But I will say that Durham has an extremely high vaccination rate. I've deliberated a lot with a lot of people about this. And we went back and forth, you know. So, part of what I'm saying is to represent the overwhelming small business owners who've reached out to me about their hardships and the amount of small businesses that we're actually about to lose and shut down within a matter of weeks. But also, you know, just preserving the local culture in Durham and all of the other things that are happening. You know, COVID had a physical impact on our health, you know, our well-being. But now we're facing a detrimental economic, a harm to our economic health. And what you're probably gonna hear most is remove the mask mandate. And I don't think anyone is more ready to remove the masks than I am. And I do support that, you know, but I understand that we have a lot to consider. But I also wanna say that, you know, we're not saying that it's just a mask. You know, I think that with Durham being vaccinated at about 70%, another 10%, you know, at least one shot or partially vaccinated. You know, our hospitals still have a bit of high numbers, but we're also a regional medical hub. And we're surrounded by some counties that didn't take COVID as seriously as we did. So, I'm saying all of this to say, you know, one, I wanna say this out loud on the record that, you know, to the local economy, to the small business owners in the area, I hear you. I've received all of the emails, and I, as we all know, I share this struggle with you. I share this struggle with you as I'm a small business owner myself. And I have to wear two hats. I have to wear the hat that weighs all of what's happening in our economy, you know, and as well as our health community and all of the data there, as well as what's happening on a day-to-day basis with my business. And that is tough, you know, but I wanna say that I, and I don't think there's anything wrong with saying this, but I think that for us, although we have to make sure we're safe and responsible, I think we're reaching a time where we need to have this conversation again on how do we move forward. And I know that, Madam Mayor, I know that you and Commissioner Howerton actually had a conversation with our medical director recently. And I, of course, I trust you guys are gonna make the right decision to lead us in this. But I just wanted to make sure I put on record, you know, that, you know, my colleagues in the small business arena, you know, I hear you. My colleagues hear you. I am in support, but I also know that we have to make the right decision on how we move forward. And I'm willing to have that conversation with my colleagues at any moment, at any time, on how we're gonna move forward. You know, I will say that there are folks that are seeing record numbers around us, you know, there. Wade County has, you know, decided, I believe they're coming down, or either have come down. The governor has made an announcement from March 7th. I am hoping that we can have a conversation on how we're gonna move forward in the very near future. It scares me, the reality economically that we're dealing with now in our small business community. And I know that we have our reasons, but I also know that as science and data evolves, I hope that we can too. Thank you.
By way of announcements from your mayor, me, I would first like to issue my heartfelt condolences to my classmate, Hillside High School class of 1980, Lester Smith, and his beautiful wife, Lenora. Lester and I attended Hillside together from 1976 till we graduated in 1980. And he has been one of my closest friends. I call him brother. I was over at his house not too long ago, been over there several times. He's always supported me, and I hope that I have always supported he and Lenora and their family. So, this is a personal loss for me. My class members were at his house on yesterday, and we were planning a get-together, I hope, at one of my other friend's house, our classmate, on Wednesday night to celebrate his birthday, as a matter of fact. So, Lenora, we love you and the kids. And like you told me, to be absent in the bodies, to be at home with Christ, and that's where we know that my brother is. And I love him and love you all too. To speak to the issue of gun violence first. For those of you who don't know, there are several of us who've been hard at work in that arena, off-camera, behind scenes. I've gotten calls from reporters almost daily asking me to speak about gun violence and what I'm doing. That is not a space that you will speak, that I will speak into publicly because there's a lack of trust between the government and folk that I'm dealing with. And I can't compromise this trust-building relationship in trying to make sure that people who are able to move differently in the streets than I by talking to a reporter. So, you will probably hear some of them saying, she can't be reached, or she won't comment, and I won't ever. Because this relationship that we are building is too fragile to jeopardize. And so, we are working daily, along with Councilwoman Freeman, she's in that space as well. And some of, Council Mark Middleton, Mayor Pro Tem, has been in that space. He had a retreat at his church. Councilwoman Williams has been in this space. And there are lots of things that are being done. So, every night that we don't have a shooting and not all violence is gang-related. But if your streets are silent, you can see the work that is being done. But we're steadily building and rebuilding trust with folk. And so, we also do have to know that as you watch these numbers rise again, please note that there are some who have already gone into those communities to try to make sure that we can stop the violence. But this is a community effort. It's not gonna be solved any other way than to address basic housing needs and basic job needs and a way to make a living in this town and to make visible what has become invisible to a lot of people and that there are a lot of hurting people out there who have no trust in government or its response to their very basic needs. And so, I'm trying to do that, and there are others like me. And so, we are working very hard, and I will share more as I am allowed to build this relationship so that people feel that we are not just using this as a political opportunity or talking point. It's a very fragile relationship that we are trying to build with some young men and young women who are determined to turn their lives around and who are looking for an opportunity to do things differently. So, with that being said, also on the COVID front, I have met about weekly and more with our public health officials, Duke University, our Chair of County Commissioners, Brenda Howerton, and with the business representatives of the business community. It is a very tenuous situation that we have now. We are being updated almost daily, but definitely weekly on our numbers and where we're going. We are watching closely March 7th, and we will revisit. I think there was a press release on Friday indicating that the orders remain unchanged at this point. The emergency orders will remain unchanged at this point. But we are constantly being vigilant, and we are very conscious of our business communities. And so, we are working with them to try to come and figure out how we maneuver so we don't lose our businesses. And as Councilwoman Williams stated, we do need to come to the table and talk more. We started those conversations about two weeks ago, and we'll continue those conversations. But we will take note of March 7th. That is a date that is becoming more and more important as that will be Councilwoman Reese's last meeting. We'll also be looking at where we are in terms of the COVID numbers. And hopefully, we will go another two weeks without another violent death on the streets of Durham. So, let's stay tuned and be vigilant about what we need to do in this moment and care for one another and be kind to one another. So, I will now turn to our priority items. Did I miss anybody else? Okay. So, we'll turn to our priority item. And we will see, I will recognize our city manager for any priority items that she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, members of the Durham City Council. I do not have any priority items this evening, but if I might have a few seconds of privilege to speak to Councilmember Charlie Reese, I would appreciate that, ma'am. Ms. Reese, with a grateful heart, I say thank you for all the support, the confidence, the friendship, and encouragement you have shown me over the years. I will really miss working with you day to day, and I'm excited for your family as you embark on this next stage of your life. Tonight, I will say almost farewell, but in Charlie Reese's style, not quite yet, as you have 336 more hours to serve our great city as a council member. So, for now, best wishes to you and your family, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, City Manager Page. I will now recognize our city attorney for any priority items that she may have.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Middleton, and members of the City Council. The City Attorney's Office also has no priority items this evening. But, Madam Mayor, if I might also take a point of personal privilege, just to say a few remarks. I will be on medical leave and unavailable for Councilmember Reese's last meeting on March 7th. I must say that when I got the news today, I was surprised and saddened. I have so enjoyed Charlie. I'm just gonna call you Charlie because that's how you've always introduced yourself to me and signed off your emails. I've really enjoyed working with you. It's been wonderful to have an attorney on the City Council who often pushes the attorneys in the City Attorney's Office to think critically and bat around ideas and think outside the box. But you're also just a really great human, and I can attest to the tremendous amount of time and effort and care and concern that Councilmember Reese has put into emailing, following up on issues for constituents and other people in Durham. Because a lot of those things came through our office. You are just a really stellar person, Charlie, and the City of Durham is better for having had your service and your time and your thought and your energy ideas. You will be greatly missed. I've already shared the news with my team in the City Attorney's Office, and they are, to a person, sad to hear that you are leaving us. But we all wish you and your family an amazing few years in Europe. So, take care. Godspeed. Be well.
Now, I'll turn to our city clerk to see if she has any priority items for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening, council members. Mayor Pro Tem Middleton and especially Mayor O'Neill. I did want to contribute toward the end. As Councilmember Reese always used to say, it's an advantage to sort of wait till the end so you don't repeat everyone's statements. But as I have spoken with Councilmember Reese, he always had something in addition to say. And it was always right on point, and we will miss you, Charlie. And I wish you the best in your travels, in your new living situation in Europe, and hope you bring some energy to wherever you go because I know you and your family are most important to you. So, good luck, and we will miss you.
Thank you so much. All right. Our next order of business is the consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of items that the council has previously considered in a work session. Our items on the consent agenda may be approved by a single vote of the council. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by a council member or a member of the public. And those items will be considered separately. And those items will be considered separately at the end of the meeting tonight. And I will read into you, into the record, the consent agenda. Number one, the Citizens Advisory Committee appointment. Number two, the Durham Convention and Visitors Bureau Discover Durham appointment. Number three, the Durham Cultural Advisory Board appointment. Number four, the Human Relations Commission appointment. Number five, the Mayor's Council for Women appointment. Number six, Participatory Budgeting Steering Committee appointment. Seven, the Recreation Advisory Commission appointment. Number eight, COVID-19 Relief Funds Performance Audit, January 2022. Nine, Discover Durham Annual Report 2021. Number 10, the Raleigh Durham Airport Authority 2021 Annual Report. Number 11, the Resolution Calling Upon the Federal Government to Urgently Address the Student Loan Crisis and Enact a Plan to Counsel Student Loan Debt and Begin the Transition to Education as a Public Good. Number 12, the 2021 Board of Adjustment Annual Report. Number 13, the 2021 Durham City County Appearance Commission Annual Report. Number 14, the 2021 Durham Open Space and Trails Commission Annual Report. 15, 2021 Historic Preservation Commission Annual Report. Number 16, 2021 Planning Commission Annual Report. 17, 2021 Homeless Services Advisory Committee Annual Report. Number 18, 2021 Durham Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission Annual Report. Number 19, the December 2021 Bid Report. Number 20, the Durham Cultural Advisory Board 2021 Annual Report. 21, Durham Environmental Affairs Board 2021 Annual Report. Item number 22, Durham Youth Works 2021 Program Evaluation Report. Number 23, the 2021 Recreation Advisory Commission Report. Number 24, Contract SW-76 Sidewalk Repairs 2021 Amendment Number One. Number 25, Contract SW-87C Request for Qualifications for Inspections and Embunishment Services for Sidewalk Projects. And that will conclude our consent agenda. And now I am ready to entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Madam Mayor, some move?
Second.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Freeman and seconded by Councilwoman Johnson. And we are now ready for the vote. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Mayor O'Neil?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Reese?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is approved unanimously. We now turn to our general business agenda, and we have tonight item number 26, which is a public hearing. Fiscal year 2022 as 2023, the annual action plan needs public hearing. And our resource person will be listed as Mr. Matthew Snars. And I also see Mr. Reginald Johnson here as well. If either of you will have comments, after then we will go right into our public hearing.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Reginald Johnson, Director of Community Development Department. This item is a public hearing, needs public hearing for entitlement funds. We are joined this evening by Ms. Monica McGee, who is a sign language interpreter as required by HUD regulation for these types of hearings. I'm going to turn it over to Matthew Snars, who's our Senior Planning and Performance Manager, to read some particulars into the record before we conduct the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Matt Snars, Planning and Performance Manager with the Department of Community Development. The purpose of this public hearing is to receive citizen comment on the community development needs in Durham neighborhoods as it relates to the use and receipt of Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, Home Investment Partnership Program, HOM. Emergency Solutions Grant, ESG, and Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. This public hearing is a requirement for the preparation and submission of the city's 2022 to 2023 annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Notice of this meeting was properly advertised in the Herald Sun and Cape House newspapers, as well as distributed via General listserv and posted on the Community Development Department's webpage located on the city Durham website. As a recipient of CDBG, HOM, ESG, and HOPA funds, the city is required to hold at least two public hearings prior to the submission of its annual action plan. The first meeting must be held in the early development stage of the plan. We anticipate the second public hearing will be held in April of 2022. In addition, the city is required to publish a copy of its draft annual action plan for citizen comment for at least 30 days prior to its submission. The city's annual action plan must be submitted to HUD by May 15th, 2022, or as applicable. HUD has not notified the city of final entitlement amounts to be received for the fiscal year 2022 to 2023. Therefore, for planning purposes, the city expects to receive approximately 2.1 million in CDBG, 1.1 million in home and home consortium, 174,000 in Emergency Solutions Grant, and 858,000 in Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS Funds. In closing, a summary of comments from this public hearing and written comments received from citizens during the development of the annual action plan will be incorporated into the final 2022 to 2023 annual action plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson and Mr. Snars. We will now turn our attention to our public speakers this evening. We welcome you all to this space and we look forward to this time together to allow you to speak to us. I would ask that we have, you would have three minutes per person. We have quite a number of speakers tonight, so I would ask that you would allow yourselves three, three minutes. I will call three names at a time, and you will go in that order if you would, please. And also, we will take a break about nine o'clock to give our interpreters and all of our folk who are working behind scenes a break. So we'll get started with our first three names. And the first would be Ms. Angela Vick Lewis. And please, I apologize in advance if I slaughter your name. So just know that I'll try to read it out if I don't pronounce it correctly. The second person will be, I'll spell it out rather, I'm sorry, would be Ms. Larissa Cybul. And the third would be Ms. Marie Faison. Ms. Angela Vick Lewis. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Angela Vick Lewis is not in the queue.
Okay, the names, thank you, Madam Clerk, will be Ms. Larissa Cybul first, followed by Ms. Marie Faison. The third one will be Ms. Evelyn Mackinger, M-A-C-H-T-I-N-G-E-R. In that order, please, three minutes apiece.
Hello. My name is Larissa.
We can hear you, Ms. Cybul, but you have echo in the background.
Is this better?
No, ma'am.
Cybul, do you have multiple devices on at the same time in your room? Is Cybul, are you there?
Ms. Cybul, I'll come right back to you as you work out your technical issue. And we will go to Ms. Marie Faison first, and then we'll come back to you, Ms. Cybul.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, perfectly.
Good. I've been waiting a while to speak. Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor and Pro Tem Mark Anthony Middleton. I appreciate this opportunity to voice my opinion. My name is Marie Hill Faison, and I work for Paratransit Go Durham. I've been with the service for 20 years. And I am all over Durham. And, and the purpose of me coming is to bring attention to the services that are provided, to the homeless, to the ones, to people that have been evicted and that are insecure with housing. And I see a lot of that in my, in my duties as a paratransit operator. And I just wanted to bring attention how important these services are. The hotel accommodations are extremely important for people with major medical issues, such as dialysis and medical appointments, treatments, life-saving things that they have to endure. And so to have some place to live, even though it's, it's not perfect, but it is shelter. We have to recognize that shelter is needed for many people that live here in Durham. And I just wanted to give that perspective from what I see and how much these facilities help the community. And we do have to care about the lowest, the people at the lowest levels that are just looking for someplace to, to lay their heads and be able to survive. So it, I came to, to speak on that. And it, it affects me because I transport these people back and forth. And they're willing to, to fight for their lives. We should be willing to fight for their lives too. And I just appreciate Councilmember Charlie Reese because he responded to many times my emails. And also Councilmember Mark Anthony Middleton, whoa, we all. That's what I'm just saying. I, I appreciate all of you all. But I want to say goodbye to Charlie Reese. And just please keep in mind the people that are out there, affordable housing, what that means, you know. And just try and support these agencies that are providing this service for people that need it. And thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for speaking with us tonight. I return again to Ms. Cybul.
Ms. Cybul has left the queue.
All right. Right, we will then turn to Ms. Evelyn Mackinger, followed by Ms. Laurie Fox. And I'm sorry, Ms. Mun, M-N-Y-E-M-E-K-I-A. Name Makima Kia Mun. Those will be the next three names. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Madam Mayor, it looks like Ms. Cybul has popped back in. I don't know if you see that as well. Is that why?
Ms. Cybul?
Yes, this is Larissa Cybul.
Hi, you're still having some echoing. Maybe able to.
I'm sorry, is this better?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. I just wanted to speak about the People's Alliance. Hope that you will continue funding for the homeless shelter in hotels, which has turned out to have been helpful to the people who stay there and also helps people to get permit housing. And it's a big ask. We know the COVID funding will be running out in June. But we think it's very important to make sure that people are safe in their own rooms so they can get stable housing and move into their own homes. The second thing is rent relief. Durham Rent Relief with Legal Aid of North Carolina was amazing. They got 5,000 applications. They have only $6 million. On average, it costs about $3,000 to keep someone from being evicted and to help people, other people who need urgent rent relief. And we really need to continue that program. There are thousands of people still waiting to get help because they have not yet recovered. One gentleman called our office on Wednesday. He had just gotten noticed he would be evicted the next day. Didn't get the mail notice, but he showed up because he's the father of a young child. And he's had a hardship. Every time the childcare shut down, he missed work. And he actually lost his job and just got a new job working at a school. And he didn't have the money to pay. But fortunately, he'd been applying for rent relief programs each time he had a chance. And he did get an application in, and he was at the courthouse. He talked to the people. They saw his application. They found out that he was being, he had a priority. And that he was able to go to the magistrate and the landlord who accepted that permit. And he and his daughter will be able to stay in their home. He has 30 days to get that done. Without that, Durham Rent Relief continuing.
Ms. Cybul?
I don't see her in the queue anymore.
Oh, there she is.
Ms. Cybul? Ms. Cybul, can you hear me? All right, it seems she's still having a bit of technical difficulties.
So I'm going to end my comments there, Mayor O'Neil, and let someone else speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Ms. Evelyn Mackinger, followed by Ms. Fox, followed by Ms. Mun, in that order, three minutes apiece. Thank you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. As a member of People's Alliance Housing and Transit Action Team, we're asking the City Council to consider allocating $6 million for the rent release program administered by Legal Services of North Carolina for this next upcoming fiscal year. This funding will serve a minimum of about 1,000 families. It's important to remind us all that evictions continue to grow in Durham. And since the federal moratorium ended in August of 2021, the number of eviction filings has grown each month in Durham. And this January 2022 showed more than twice the rate in the number of eviction filings and writs of possession than just one year ago in January of 2021. And according to DataWorks, there were 250 eviction filings and less than 50 writs of possession in January of 2021. While just recently, in January of 2022, 553 eviction filings and 104 writs of possessions were served by the sheriff. This is too many evictions in our community of Durham. The demand for rent relief in Durham is huge. Legal services, as Larissa just mentioned, received 5,000 applications and, and they. received 5,000 applications and they allocated $5.7 million in this COVID federal rental assistance money. But almost 2,000 of these applicants received an average number of $3,000 per family. Those families receiving assistance were able to prevent eviction and remain in their homes. The devastating news is that there were about 3,000 applicants who were not served because federal money, rent money ran out. We are not expecting any more federal COVID-related rental relief funding in the future. So now it is up to our city and the county governments to act and provide rental relief funds to prevent further evictions in our cities. Poor and low-income Durham families have suffered greatly, as many of our members mentioned in the earlier parts of the meeting, during these last two years of COVID. With COVID rental relief funding ending as well as stimulus checks, the child tax credit ending, families will now face even more overwhelming financial pressures. We fear that evictions will reach skyrocketing proportions in this upcoming months. We are facing an affordable housing super crisis in Durham and the lack of affordable housing is a huge factor that makes families get behind in rent. Many low-income families are paying more than 70% of their income on housing and some are paying over 70% of their income on housing. Families in terms are faced with the difficult decision whether to pay their rent or get their prescriptions filled or put food on the table. As Mayor O'Neill stated this morning at the Affordable Housing Coalition, our solution must be big and bold if we are to face the enormity of this problem. We must include solutions that drastically increase the number of affordable housing units in Durham. Our families are suffering. There are very few rentals under $900 a month in Durham. Mayor O'Neill mentioned this morning that there were 3,300 rental units currently available in Durham, but only 165 are affordable at $900 a month.
Thank you so much. We appreciate you being here this evening. Ms. Fox?
Good evening, all. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, loud and clear.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and all City Council members. My name is Lori Fox. I am also a member of the People's Alliance Housing Action Team. I'm a retired physician assistant who served low-income families all my life. I know as well as you that a stable, safe place to live is essential for maintaining the overall health of families. And eviction has immediate and long-term mental and physical health risks as well as negative impacts on the future educational and economic health of each family member. I volunteered for a short time with Church World Service to assist people apply for the ERA, Durham's Initial Federally Funded Rental Assistance Program for those impacted by the COVID pandemic. I heard stories of families on the edge, in crisis, desperate. Rental assistance provide, helped folks stay in their homes. It gave them time to find jobs and possible alternative housing, avoiding the long-lasting injury of eviction on the family's integrity and health. Given the nearly exhausted funds of the current rental relief program, as Evelyn Machtinger just noted, I urge the City Council to provide another $6 million of the American Rescue Plan funds to Legal Aid of North Carolina to support the remaining thousands of unfunded applicants at risk of eviction. Given Durham's affordable housing super crisis, the ability of families to remain in their homes is crucial. To obtain debt relief, to avoid an eviction record, has huge positive, long-lasting impacts on these families. I urge the City Council to support the well-being of these families with a robust continuation of the rent relief program and thus support the well-being of Durham as a whole. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fox, for your time tonight. Ms. Munn?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes ma'am, we hear you loud and clear. Thank you, Ms. Munn.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and distinguished Council members. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight and thank you for all your service and dedication to the city of Durham. I was asked to speak tonight and tell my story and speak for the less fortunate in my community and surrounding areas in Durham. I'm a 23-year-old resident of Durham. I have lived and went to college and worked here for over 25 years. Just in the past two years since the novel COVID-19, I faced some difficulties, as I'm sure all of us have in some way. In August 2020, I contracted COVID-19. November 2020, my employer of 20 years retired and sold her business due to the pandemic. And more recently, on the 4th of July, I suffered a stroke. The stroke has left me with countless doctor's appointments and unable to work or drive. Soon after Christmas 2021, myself and my family, including my nine-year-old son, contracted COVID once again. These unforeseen circumstances has threatened myself and my son's being evicted, even at this very moment. I was ecstatic to hear about the Durham, the city of Durham released a rental program that was introduced in January. It gave me a sense of hope to be able to sustain my home and residence and get back on my feet. I felt this program not only was here to help me, but others in the community. When it first launched, I immediately got my application in. I've waited since January and with no response. I reached out by calling. I also emailed. And the response that I got was that my application was still under review. The first priority would go to those being evicted, those who have been out of work for 90 days and then those with low income. Myself alongside ones in my community meet at least three of the four pressing requirements. I have emailed and the email also said that I was able to reach out to legal aid or hire legal help for $50 an hour. I trust God and consider myself fortunate to be even considered to have rental relief at this time. I'm urging each City Council member within the sound of my voice to please allow the residents of Durham to continue to apply and allow them to get the $60 million that was released ASAP to prevent evictions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Munn, for sharing your story.
You're welcome.
We now turn to Mr. Reynolds Smith, usually followed by Ricky White and then Thomas III, the fourth William, and William Adams, I believe. Mr. Smith?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm representing, can you hear me?
Yes sir, loud and clear.
I'm representing the Durham Open Space and Trails Advisory Commission and I'm here to talk about the need for our city to create equitable open space. Open space for everyone here, no matter where they live. Five years ago Durham adopted an urban open space plan and all of us, the City Council, the planning commission, we all thought it was a great plan. Communities of concern, yes, we agreed, we have these and they need open space. But there's a problem. How will the recommendations in this plan come to pass, become realities? Who will implement them? What departments? What people? Five years later, the answer is clear. Nobody. Nobody will implement them until the city makes it someone's job to do it. Until it hires someone to go into communities of concern and hear residents' feelings about their surroundings, discuss with them what might be possible, allay their fears, reassure them that their city can be trusted to be behind them, then ultimately apply for clean water grants or other grants and finally buy the vacant land or obtain a conservation easement for access to it. You have our proposal to create this position. You see how our notion of an open space implementer already works in the Boston metro area, in Brookline, Mass., an urban area blessed with almost as many creeks and streams as Durham has, though it lacks Durham's inactive rail corridors. In short, a town rich in those spots that are truly treasures, but are typically overlooked as trash. You have all these details. There are many vital things the city can and should spend money on, but there are few and maybe none that contribute so much to the city's welfare in so many different ways as its concern for its citizens' experience of their surroundings. For decades, we've known the importance of green space to our physical health. The science is in, it's settled. But what about our mental and emotional health? Consider this thought experiment. You're going down North Austin Avenue. Maybe you're picking up your child at Eastway Elementary or Holton Middle School or further down at Burton Elementary. There between Easton Playground and Long Meadow Playground is a huge empty space you know well. The only other open space that's big or bigger and in equal distance from downtown is Duke's East Campus. Of course, you can't go into it because your way is blocked by a six and sometimes seven-foot chain link fence topped with overhanging barbed wire. What if that fence were gone and you could enter it and just find trees and grass and be immersed in pure nature? What would be the effect of that on your mind, on your emotions? Millions of people like me believe that access to places like I just now described, places where everything around you is biology or geology and there's nothing to suggest any human presence except knowing that some humans made such a place possible for you to be in. Millions of us believe such places can impart a reverence for life. Reverence for life. Something our city could use more of, as could every city. How much would having more places like this impact gun violence, gang violence, drug addiction? I don't know, but I know it's not nothing.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you. Mr. White?
Hi y'all, can you hear me?
Yes sir, I'm clear.
Great. I have to admit that I'm a little confused because I thought that this topic was more focused on open space. So I apologize if this is inappropriate time to riff off of Reynolds' comments. But I'm also here in support of Doss's request for funding support in the budget for an open space implementer position. I believe that Councilmember Freeman had suggested to Doss that we should probably use this opportunity to talk about that. And so again, I apologize if this is the wrong venue for that. But since I have your attention, I'll go ahead and mention a couple of things. As the Director of the Elbe Creek Watershed Association, we work a lot on open space issues in Durham. We're a very small organization. You know, River Association's a very small organization. Triangle Land Conservancy's a little larger, but we're the three land trusts in the region. And what we do is we partner with municipalities, including the city and the county, on bringing residents open space. So buying land to conserve it, you know, in the appropriate places, working with communities to help them understand what their options are and in some cases, working with the communities themselves to buy and control the land so that they have it in places like, say, Merritt Moore Community to control on their own, either for conservation or water quality purposes. And the one missing piece in Durham, as Reynolds explained, is that we don't have an open space implementer position, which means all these organizations working for the residents of Durham don't have that missing link of a city employee that we can work with that can help go out and find grant money and go out and help implement some of these visions, these bold visions that the city has concocted through the Durham, things like the Urban Durham Open Space Plan. And so we're really encouraging y'all, while you're thinking about the super important issues of HUD funding and where to allocate that separately, to also be thinking about how we can also provide these open space areas for all the residents of Durham, not just the wealthy folks who maybe already have places like Seven Taker Woods and Watsonville, but also finding ways to distribute that throughout the community for the benefit of everyone. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. White. And this is the appropriate place. This is for the Annual Action Plan Needs, in quotes, N-E-E-D-S. So you are in the right place and this is a public hearing for all of our citizens who have signed up regarding needs of our community. So now we turn to Mr. Adams. I see them on the screen, Madam Clerk. I don't know.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Adams needs to unmute himself.
Alright. Mr. Adams? It's showing that he unmuted, but still not hearing him. Mr. Adams? Alright. About five more seconds and then we'll come back to him after Ms. Nelson, Sandra Nelson, Mr. Tony Atwater, and Ms. Vanessa Evans, I believe. So Ms. Adams, Mr. Adams, we're gonna try it again. You're on mute. If not, we will return to you.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hello, this is Stella Adams at 4128 Cobblestone Place, Durham, North Carolina. And I am speaking to you tonight on behalf of the Housing Committee of the Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People. First, because of the short amount of time and the number of speakers you have, I ask that you keep the record open for our written comments that will be coming during the open comment period. The Durham Committee on the Affairs of Black People is an 86-year-old institution that seeks to appropriately represent the needs and desires, initiatives of black community within Durham's historic black neighborhoods. And I'm gonna be really specific here because it's important. Bragtown, Walltown, South Side, the Haytop Fable Street Corridor, the Holloway Street Corridor, Old Farm, East Durham, Northeast Durham, Emery Woods, and other legacy black neighborhoods impacted by the public policy choices made by elected officials that have generational and long-lasting impacts. The Durham Committee and these legacy neighborhoods have made it clear that Durham's public policies were forged by a history of decisions that have led to inequitable outcomes along racial and economic lines. To the extent possible, the Durham Committee intends to hold public agencies in charge of updating the Durham Annual Action Plan accountable to make sure the needs of the current and future residents are met. In the Annual Action Plan, the priority has to be for maintaining and sustaining existing historically black communities by providing subsidy and making priority home retention, homeownership retention in these neighborhoods. And that means that the long-term homeowners tax program must be funded. I saw where there's a recommendation not to fund the program because nobody used it and it was more costly administratively than to implement. Well, if you pass an ordinance on December the 6th with an expiration date of December the 31st, how do you do the outreach to make sure that citizens are aware of the advantage in the program? And by the way, if you live in certain neighborhoods, the city ought to be promoting the March 31st deadline that's available for people in specific neighborhoods like South Side from your previous program.
Ms. Adams? I believe I have noticed that your time, you're three minutes up, but we would appreciate if you would send your written comments in. We now turn to Ms. We now turn to Ms. Nelson, followed by Mr. Atwater.
Good afternoon. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear.
Okay. My name is Sandra Nelson. I had a very hard shift in August of 20, August of 192021. I went to Magic Terrace to pick up one of my grandsons to take him to a job interview. And when I was there to pick him up, I put my car reverse. Someone shot in my car. They shot me in my chest, and I'm still living with a bullet in my left arm. And I'm sorry. I always get to crying. I'm sorry. But I'm very sorry, y'all. And Ms. Pinnick Coleman, she helped me. She with the Center for Housing Ownership. She helped me on to get my bills paid for the four months I was out of work. And it would be nice if they would make some more affordable housing here in Durham for the low-income family. But they won't lose their housing. And I guess that's all. Okay. Okay. I heard you would be the one who would help them stop the violence. I get to cry. I'm sorry.
It's okay, Ms. Nelson.
Thank you.
Thank you for sharing.
Ms. Nelson, I had the same problem earlier tonight. You have nothing to be ashamed about. Wish you the best.
I know.
Thank you.
I just wish you'd get better, Ms. Nelson. Mr. Atwater? Mr. Tony Atwater?
Madam Mayor, I don't see a Tony Atwater in the queue.
We miss Vanessa Evans, followed by Ms. Consta Wright, followed by Ms. Regina Mays. And if Mr. Atwater comes back on, we will return to him.
Good evening, Mayor O'Neill and City Councilmembers. My name is Vanessa Mason Evans. I'm the Chair of the Bragtown Community Association, and I also speak for other underserved communities in Durham. Durham has got to change. The person that just got off the call, it got to me. A lot of families are hurting. A lot of people are dying that shouldn't be dying. I commend Leonardo and you, Mayor O'Neill, for what y'all are doing with the gang violence that's going on in Durham. But Durham has got to make affordable housing and transit a priority to underserved communities throughout Durham. Homelessness, fixed income, low income, and essential workers have got to have affordable housing. And not just affordable housing spaces, but we have got to change the system so that more essential workers can afford to buy their own homes to grow generational wealth. I remember Durham has been a place for black and brown people, but we grew generational wealth. So many things are changing in Durham that are hurting so many people. Our transit systems have got to fit all communities, and we need to fix our inner infrastructure before we try to go for a passenger rail. I'm not against a passenger rail, but we have so much that is going on that needs to be fixed before we add new things to our system. We have many families that need to get to hospitals, doctor's appointments, work. Just simple things of being able to go see a parent or a child on a city bus. Route 9 has been fixed to where it's not getting any funding. And what I've been told, we would not get it for 20 or 30 years. No community should have to wait that long when you have money that's going into the system. And for Bragtown, last year, $64 million came out of our community, but we don't see any money coming back into our community. I'm in hopes that the city of Durham will see the things and the plights that we are going through. Not only our old people, and not our middle-aged people too, but our young people are fighting and wanting to have places to stay that are comfortable, safe, and secure, just as we have as we sit here on this call tonight. I pray that Durham would change for the better and that we will work together to not only see those people that are coming into Durham, where we have 3,300 units sitting empty, and we have people who are desperately needing a place to stay. I am in hopes that things would change for the better for all people, no matter where you come from, no matter what color you are, that we can all say that Durham is our place of where we want to stay. I don't want to leave Durham. This is my roots. My family has been here all their life, ever since slavery. So this is what I call home. And I hope that other people can understand that those who have been here for years can stay. And I hope that Route 9, along with all the other issues that we are having within communities, will change for the better. I thank you for your time tonight. Charlie, I would like to say before I get off my call, I wish you the best for you and your family. I wish y'all blessed and safe travels. And I pray that y'all have durable endeavors in whatever y'all do when y'all do leave. And thank you for serving on City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Ms. Wright?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
My name is Constance Wright, and I live on DeMille Street. And what I'm speaking about tonight is asking you all to please continue the Assistance for the Low-Income Tax Assistance Program that begins at the 30% AMI for low-income homeowners in all communities in Durham. When the city and county decided to make this tax relief program available to all homeowners, many homeowners in heavily gentrified areas such as my neighborhood in Bragtown were able to benefit from a program that was originally designed to benefit certain areas of the more affluent residents in Durham. The decision to open the program to all Durham homeowners of wider income levels made it possible for more residents, including myself, to take advantage of a program that our tax dollars went towards supporting anyway. Again, please keep the Low-Income Property Tax Assistance Relief Program in place, you know, with the funding and everything. And thank you, and best wishes to you, Councilman Reese, you and your family on your future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking with us tonight, Ms. Wright. We'll now ask for Mr. David Crispell, C-R-I-S-P-E-L-L, followed by Mr. William Jackson and Ian Alexander. I think that will be the end of our public speakers. So Mr. Crispell?
Madam Mayor, I also have a Regina Mays on my list.
Oh, I'm sorry. We should have. Ms. Mays, you're actually first, Ms. Mays. Ms. Mays, you're actually next.
Madam Mayor, she's using an older version of the software where I would need to promote her to panelist. Is that okay?
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, Ms. Mays.
Sorry about my older version.
That's okay.
Mayor Protem and the rest of the council members, thank you for this moment to speak. I wanted to really hone in on four points that I received in an email about these funds. Number one being to be able to continue funding the Durham Relief Program. I do agree with supporting funds for that, but I think it's a lack of understanding where residents do not qualify for such funding. A lot of times, people have assumptions that just because you're in a bad financial situation that you will automatically qualify. And so I don't want the perception to be that needs will be met at a level that they are not able to meet because the recipient may not be qualifiable. For an example, during the COVID relief funds, if a household rent went into the rears pre-pandemic, they were not qualifiable for the fund. So I think those are misconceptions of the community when they think that help is here to help residents in need. For the second point that I received, as far as the homeless shelter, when it comes to funding shelters, I know firsthand the funding that is needed for shelters. My family and I were guests at Families Moving Forward in 2017, before we were housing affordable housing. So that hits home for me. But one thing that we cannot do is unless there is added space to those shelters, it will still not meet the need. We saw that during the COVID nights that we recently had in Durham where the overflow shelters even had to have guests on the floor with covers because there was no space in the end. Number three, when it comes to the Partner for Affordable Rental Homes, that comes to, as some have said, you have to go out and talk to these landlords. Somebody may have the income to pay the rent, but if they do not qualify with some landlords are asking for three or four times the rent to even be qualifiable to fill out an application. And some even application fees are now $50 to $125 that I recently found out. And so for individuals seeking for housing, already having a financial burden, to pay 50-plus per application they're even applying for to see if they even qualify for the residence, that can also put a financial burden because there is no assistance that aids with application processes. When I'm trying to speak fast, my three minutes. When it comes to number four, I believe I'm on the tax relief. I remember that there were individuals who their income was slightly over in retirement. When you have a home that's going next to a, if someone purchased their home in the 80s or 90s and they now have to come back with taxes that a $500,000 or $400,000 home is going next to them, that increases that they already put a burden on them. And then if they apply for or attempt to apply for the rental assistance or any, I'm sorry, the tax assistance, then they have to meet those requirements. So sometimes it's not necessarily the funding that's available, though there is a need for that. It's do the recipient qualify until we.
Thank you, Ms. Mays. If you would, please send your comments in so that we make sure that we have all of your points, okay? I'm taking those, but that will be helpful. We now turn to David Crispell. I'm gonna check and see if he is in the queue with our clerk. I don't see his name listed.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Crispell is not in the queue.
All right. We will then turn to Mr. William Jackson. Then we will follow that with Mr. Ian Alexander. And then I believe we also have Ms., just one last person. Ms. Angela Vic Lewis will be the order. Mr. Jackson?
Hey, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir. Loud and clear.
Thanks for y'all allowing me time, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is William Jackson. I am a nonprofit leader here in Durham. I also stay in the Eastern community, and I work out of the W.G. Pearson Center building, along with a lot of other nonprofits. The W.G. Pearson Center, as y'all probably know, is right across the street from the Fayette Place Housing Development or the old Fayette Place Housing Development. As a kind of quote-unquote business owner, I don't quite own the business as the executive director, but the person who is leading the particular organization and a part of this community, I'm coming to y'all today to really ask you to deeply consider examining any decisions to support, financially support any development of Fayette Place under the current proposal that DHA has selected for the developers who they chose for that particular project. From my examination, from conversations with, from my examination with conversations with people who are interested in this project and community members, we consistently do programming in the Haytai community. Little J. Wisdom has been serving the Fayette Corridor, Fayetteville Street Corridor in the Haytai community for the last seven years. We know that the constituents do not feel like the proposal that DHA selected reflects their needs, wants, or desires. Additionally, we don't think that it reflects the city's commitment as outlined in the Racial Equity Task Force findings, nor does it seem to respond to or reflect what the city demanded of DHA when they handed over the property originally to make sure that it was community-rooted and community kind of like governed in terms of who gets to kind of build on that property. In addition, from my understanding from some folks who have looked at the proposal, the dollar amount that they say if they're gonna be able to build the units probably is gonna have them falling short on the amount of units that they're gonna be able to do, which is going to kind of further exacerbate many of the issues that people talked about, which is reducing the amount of housing that is affordable to folks. So I'm just really asking you all to take a deep examination of that. And I know at the end of the day, it's not your decision, but proposal, but you do get to decide how you choose to allocate funds and really asking DHA to do the right thing and listen to the community for once. It would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson, for your time tonight and your comments. Mr. Ian Alexander? First initial Ian, last name Alexander.
Madam Mayor, I don't see an Alexander in the queue.
Then we will turn to Ms. Vic, I believe. Let me get her name right. Ms. Louis Vic.
I'm here. Hello.
It's Vic Lewis.
Okay, yeah.
Can you hear you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Loud and clear.
Oh, sorry. All right. Thank you. Sorry I'm late, y'all. A little finger problem. But to capture what the, speaking from on the Homeless Advisory Board, my name is Angela Vic Lewis. I am the Chair of the Homeless Advisory Board with lived experience. It just really is, I don't even know where to begin. It's like, I'm really sick and tired of seeing all these buildings going up and nothing is going up for the people that are living in the street. And I do this advocacy work for the people who cannot speak, for the voiceless. I've been in Durham now, I think, about eight years. And unfortunately, my grandson and I had came through right there where you all at, one session, and we were homeless. And, you know, by the grace of God and other people that stepped in and helped us, you know, to build their families moving forward. But nevertheless, the thing is this. With the matatorium that just went on and still is going on, it's a lot of people that are not gonna be having anywhere to live, families, kids, people living in cars and everything right now. And it just seems like it's not enough being done when other counties around Durham are really doing stuff, you know what I'm saying? And it's just like, the homeless is not getting a break that are still out in the street. And it hurts me. I look at my dog. I tell my dog, like, "You're living better than people out here in the street," and that's sad. You know, and it's, I don't even know where to finish that with you all, but we have got to do something. For three years, I've been hearing people talk, 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 talk. There's really nothing that has been, to me, that has been done that really can be done. And I just. And I just hope that, you know, with moving forward with this COVID and whatever, the Omarion or whatever, that it's a way that we could reach um the homeless and take care of them. Like, it's categories of homelessness, you know, it's, and you know, everybody is not a schemer. Everybody is not a drug addict there, you know? And we need to do more for the homeless committee that, I mean, the homeless community that are living out there in the streets. And it's sad, you know, it's too many uh empty buildings up and down Guess Road, Roxborough Road that are empty. You know, like, after they come out of those shelters, they open table ministry, they ride the bus all day. All day, especially when it's cold, because they don't have nowhere to go. And I just think we need to really try to do something better for our community, for our people, before people start popping up dead, you know? So.
Thank you so much for your comments this evening. Thank you for your time. Madam Clerk, I just want to check in with you to make sure that I did not miss any speakers.
Madam Mayor, we have additional speakers in the queue that were not on the on the list. Would you like them to raise their virtual hand and we can address them?
Yes, ma'am, and around nine o'clock, we will, we will take a break, so. Or what about we do this, um, why don't we go ahead and take a ten minute break right now? Uh, so, and then we'll come back at nine o'clock in the interim. Then you and I can speak about who they are and we can go from there, okay? So we'll stand, we will stand at break until nine P M. Thank you.
Our police and community safety departments have been awarded grant funding to help improve public safety responses for people dealing with mental illness and who come in contact with the criminal justice system. The Connect and Protect Law Enforcement Behavioral Health Responses Program Grant is for approximately eight hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and requires a little more than a three hundred and fifty-six thousand dollar match. It will be used to contract three licensed clinicians and fund site visits to other law enforcement agencies to learn best practices and crisis intervention training. The funding will also pay for supplies and equipment needed for the three new clinicians. The purpose of the Connect and Protect Program is to support collaborative efforts between law enforcement and behavioral health specialists. These efforts should improve public safety responses and outcomes for people with mental illness and co-occurring mental illness and substance abuse issues. More information about the grant can be found at B J A dot O J P dot gov.
Have you experienced changes in Durham that negatively affect your everyday life? Many in the community have. The city and county of Durham want to correct those issues and ensure that future changes work for the entire community. They're listening and want to hear your ideas for making Durham a place where everyone thrives. That's why the city and county of Durham are inviting all members of the Durham community to take part in the creation of the new comprehensive plan, which will determine the vision for growing Durham over the next thirty years. This collaboration between the city and county of Durham and the Durham community is the result of the new Engage Durham Initiative, which seeks to ensure that all community stakeholders are involved in the shaping of city and county projects. Help build a Durham that works for everyone.
Chief, I know you said that you think there there's more of of a violent element to the shootings that we're having. What did you mean by that?
It is the the number of shots being fired, you know, one shot is too much, okay? Well, well, I I really do believe that, and I think we all do as well. But but when we look at the multiple rounds, so when we have thirty, forty rounds uh of, you know, expended casings where bullets have been fired, that is mind blowing to me. And um the fact that this is happening frequently um is is it just, it does indicate that there is an increased level or a higher level of the, you know, really the the wanting to get someone, you know, the the being, really being committed to committing this crime. And unfortunately, the commitment is there to end a life.
Did you know the city of Durham has interpretation and translation services available? The city adopted a language access plan to provide language services and help non-English speakers have access to city services and programs without a language barrier. Through the city's language access plan, residents have the right to request interpretation and translation services free of charge, receive translation of vital documents and emergency communications in Spanish, and submit complaints of language discrimination or on the failure to adequately provide services in accordance with the city's language access plan policy. For more information on the city's language access efforts, visit durhamnc.gov slash language access.
The Durham City Council meetings and Planning Commission meetings are now available to livestream on all devices via the city of Durham's social media accounts. To watch, simply go to City of Durham N C on YouTube, Facebook, or Twitter. Devices include phones, tablets, laptops, desktops, streaming boxes and sticks, and smart TVs. The easiest way to view the livestream on smart TVs and streaming devices, such as the Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV, is via the YouTube app. Now you can follow along with the latest developments in the Durham community at dinner, your kid's game, the mall, in bed, during a breather, in the bathtub, and even on the International Space Station.
I count on Durham for awesome adventures and great bike shops.
I know I can count on Durham for great sports in every season.
I always count on Durham for amazing cultural events.
I count on Durham for its innovative ideas and the determination to bring them to life.
I count on Durham for community and a place for everyone.
I count on Durham to do a good job and to celebrate our success.
Did you know that the city of Durham counts on these individuals? In a city of more than two hundred and sixty thousand people, you're looking at residents who are making their voices count, people who care about the past, the present, and the future of the city of Durham. And you know what? It doesn't matter how mature.
Or young.
Whether you're passionate about the economy, the arts scene, or the plight of the homeless.
In fact, we have nearly thirty boards, committees, and commissions that you can participate on.
The requirements are to be a Durham city resident and be current on your Durham city and county taxes.
Durham is your home. You can count on Durham to be there for you.
Can we count on you to be there for our city?
Can we count on you to be there for Durham?
Can we count on you to be there for our city?
Can we count on you to be there for Durham?
So come on, get involved, apply today.
We can count on Durham, but can Durham count on you? Para recibir más información sobre la labor de la ciudad relacionada con el acceso al idioma, visita durhamnc.gov/ajonaltaxo. visita durhamnc.gov diagonal acceso.
All right. Here we are. At least me and the mayor are back. The rest of these slackers will be here directly. Oh, oh, speaking of which, hi.
Been a sobering night. Thank you for that little humor.
If I'm not laughing, I'm crying.
I tell you. Ooh, heavy stuff, heavy stuff. Well, it's nine o'clock, everybody. I'm just gonna go through the list um that I have gone over with our clerk to make sure that everybody, all of our speakers, get an opportunity to sit, to speak tonight for three minutes. I have six names. I have Laura Stroud, Ms. Camilla Faust, Ms. Laura Stroud, Ms. Camilla Faust, Christian, Mr. Ms. Christian Burns, Ms. Donna Frederick, Ms. Jackie Wagstaff. And I apologize for probably mispronouncing this name. But it's Karthik Sudaramathy. Did I pronounce it right, our clerk? She was trying to give me lessons, but my braces sometime don't let me speak correctly.
You did pretty great. Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. Then, did I miss anyone? If so, if you will please raise your hand so that we will make sure. But I have, tho- those are the six names that I have, and our clerk will take note if I missed someone. So we'll start first with Ms. Stroud, Ms. Faust, and Ms. Burns. We'll go that way, and it may be Mr. Burns. Okay? All right, and you have three minutes.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Laura Stroud, and I'm the Chair of the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission. I would like to speak about Durham's need to adequately plan for open space and conservation within our rapidly developing urban environment. In December of 2021, the Durham Open Space and Trails Commission passed a resolution in favor of a budget allocation for an open space implementer staff position within city government. Many are familiar with the recreational ben- benefits that parkland provides within urban areas. So there are many public benefits to conserving undeveloped open space, such as improved health outcomes, flooding and other natural hazard mitigation, and the provision of ecosystem services such as water quality treatment, carbon sequestration, and stormwater control that the city may otherwise pay to provide. The city approved the Urban Open Space Plan in uh 2017, which identifies priorities for land acquisition to minimize the public benefit of undeveloped open space. To maximize, I think I said minimize, maximize the public benefit of undeveloped open space. In my experience as a DOST member and a land conservation professional, Durham's implementation of the Urban Open Space Plan has been stymied by the lack of planning staff, of a planning staff member charged with protecting open space. This does not speak to the lack of enthusiasm or effectiveness of the city's existing planning staff, but to a gap that exists within work plans and staffing capacity. A nearby example of a staff position that effectively fulfills this charge is the Durham County Real Estate Department that is able to both cultivate long-term landowner relationships and to act urgently and quickly when unexpected conservation opportunities arise. The city of Durham lags behind peer communities in conservation of open, urban open space, and there's an urgent need to prioritize conservation of our identified priorities as our city continues to experience intense development pressure. Please support the Durham Open Space and Trail Commission's request to fund, one, a position in city government for an open space implementer; two, an annually recurring open space budget for the city, such as the county already has, to enable making timely purchases in the public interest; three, an expanded policy regarding surplus properties to offer a conservation opportunity in appropriate cases; and four, an annual report to city council to ensure regular progress towards meeting the goals of the Urban Open Space Plan. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak on the need for open space conservation and an, an open space implementer staff position.
Thank you, Ms. Stroud. For your comments, please send them in. Ms. Faust? You may need to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, loud and clear.
Okay, I would like to say congratulations to you, um Mayor O'Neill, on winning. And uh my family's from the West End. So congratulations to you and uh everybody else on the city council. Um, actually, um, every, everything has been mentioned about uh what I want to talk about. And I'm very brief um about the um longtime homeowner grant, tax grant. Um, I'm from the South Side. South Side has changed a lot, and we still have a lot of people, including myself, that do need this grant. Because our taxes have increased tremendously. And also, um, we still have a lot of rental, that rental people that needs assistance to continue to stay in their family, I mean, in their homes. I do tutor some kids in the neighborhood and would like to tutor more. And um, you know, their family needs a lot of assistance. So I would just want to say, can y'all please consider those two grants? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Faust. Thank you so much for, for tonight, for being here tonight. Turn to Ms. Christian Burns. I believe you may need to unmute yourself.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Burns is not unmuting himself.
All right. Mr. Burns, can you unmute yourself? Give you about five seconds more as I give the lineup for the next three speakers, and then we'll try to return to you. That will be Donna Frederick, Jackie Wagstaff, and Karthik Sudaramathy. Right. Return to Ms. Frederick, and we'll return back to Mr. Burns. Ms. Frederick? Ms. Frederick, do you? Ms. Frederick? You're unmuted, but we're not hearing you. Ms. Frederick? All right.
Hello?
We, we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Very faintly.
Okay, it might, it might be disconnected because I'm in a, in a bad room. Can you hear me now?
Very faintly, but we can, we can make you out, I think.
Okay, um, just quickly, I just, um, two points of continuing to funding the property tax help in the communities. Um, I'm in one of the communities right now where this is big development, and it is only going to increase our property taxes as these houses come in that are not affordable. They're high in the houses, and they're moving into the community, which is, you know, it's really devastating with the lack of housing we already have, and we just added more housing that is not affordable. The second thing is, there's an ordinance that I got from the Planning Commission on these small lots that was passed some years ago, and it's parcels that are less than two acres. And these are legally exempt flats that are platted as single-family lots. So they don't have to go um to stormwater control, um abatement, and also the tree regulations. And so this needs to be looked at again, um, from council, because what was happening, these small lots, it's a single family now, with dense trees, four houses are being put on a single lot, and all the trees were cut down that's to be, every single one of them, in an historical neighborhood that has, you know, and, and this is not a fair way to add housing to Durham. It's destroying neighborhoods. And so I just wanted to bring that ordinance to take another look at it. Ordinance section 8.31 B2. And that is for small lots, less than two acres. Do not, they're exempt from the regulations. And we need to really address and take a look at that individually. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Frederick. We will return to, uh, we will go to Ms. Wagstaff.
Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor. I, I, my bad. You're not my honor anymore, you're my mayor. Um, good evening, Madam Mayor and Mayor Pro temp. Um, there was a lot of things said tonight, but um, about these funds and how they should be used. But there was a couple of things said that, that kind of made me take a pause about how we, how things are viewed in the community. You know, there was some requests to use funds to create uh what I perceive to be public housing all over again. We're talking about buying, purchasing a hotel and using it to, for uh uh temporarily stressed families. And for me, you're not talking about going behind the Hilton, you're talking about going down to Welland Village or somewhere and purchasing one of the rat holes that already exists and putting a population that we're trying to create a space where they don't have to live like that, in that setting again. And then there's no, um, there's no conversation about how that's going to be managed or any of that. Just, let's just do it because we need to get these people off the street. That's okay. We need to create real affordable housing. And a lot of times, we get lost in this affordable housing thing. When we mention it, we think it's a good thing. But affordable housing to some people and affordable housing to when y'all talk about it, it's two different things. When I talk about affordable housing, I'm talking about people that have zero income. And I don't care how much you bill, you cannot make a person with zero income fit into the ground hole with the square peg. You can't do it. So you have to talk about how do we give them sustainable income to be able to afford to live somewhere in Durham? Because right now, the message is mixed that the city is sending. You know, we talk about these mixed-income communities. And then at the same time, while we're talking about creating these mixed-income communities and moving from public housing to these mixed-income communities, we're talking about creating dwellings that are just, uh similar to the public housing units, where we take all the people of the same low means and place them in one setting. It's almost like, I feel like it's a forced uh population dis- disposal, where we're, we're getting rid of populations of people that we don't want to see in our city. Because this city has become so overwhelmingly uh high-income that it makes it virtually impossible. Because when I look at half of the people that work for the city and work for the county, they don't live in Durham. They live in other counties where they can afford to live. So if the people that work here with pretty decent salaries can't live here, and all you have to do is look at 1:47 in the afternoon at 4:30 and 5 o'clock, you can see where everybody's going. They either going north or they're going south. They're getting out of Durham. The money is leaving Durham, but the people that are here, stuck here, that don't have the means to do that, don't have any resources. And we can't talk about buying up ratchet hotels and putting that population in the hotel just to say we've done something to feel comfortable with ourselves. We have to have a long-term solution. So I'm hoping that these funds can be used to create real affordable housing. And one of the affordable housing need is for young people. There are so many young people out here that are homeless. But because of their age and because they are not emancipated, there's nothing you can really do. The shelter doesn't take anyone under 18 years old. Ernie Mills doesn't deal with kids on that kid. He doesn't even deal with families that have kids that are 16 and above.
Ms. Wagstaff? We would thank you for your three minutes. Thank you so much for your input tonight. We now turn to Mr. Sundaramathy. And then we will return back to Ms. the Burn, Christian Burns. Karthik? I'm so sorry for how I'm probably messed up your name. If you unmute yourself, we are ready to hear you for three minutes, sir. Mr. Karthik? Ms. Karthik? Sundaramathy?
Madam Mayor? If he wants to speak, maybe he can raise his virtual hand.
If you raise your hand.
We can ask Mr. Burns if he would like to speak by raising his hand.
Mr. Burns? If you would like to speak, you have the floor.
Neither are unmuting.
Uh, were they, okay, now we have one.
Hello?
Yes, sir.
Hi, hi, Council members, um Mayor O'Neill. I just wanted to add to what Reynolds Smith spoke about the Durham Open Space and Trails uh request for a open space implementer. And I'd like to stress the need uh for an open space implementer to help the, the city um identify spaces that we can preserve for future generations, uh which can be uh the lungs of the city and places for, for uh, uh, community members to, to be a part of nature. So um so thanks for listening to me and have a good evening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time tonight. We will turn again to Mr. Christian Burns. If you can unmute yourself, if you would like to speak. All right. Madam Clerk, I'll turn my attention to you to see that we have allowed all of our speakers the time allotted for them to speak tonight.
Yes, we have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. I would ask, is there any other business to come before this city council tonight?
Mayor Neil, I just want to say you handled that publicly really well. You did a great job, thank you. That was awesome.
Thank you. Councilman Reese, I'm gonna ask you to adjourn us, sir. In your own way, have your say.
Thank you, Mayor Neil. I uh, I'd just like to thank my colleagues again for your kind words and everybody in the public. This meeting is adjourned at 9:17 PM. Uh, we'll see you guys on Thursday. Take care, everybody.
We'll see. Thanks, Charlie. Good night, everybody. Stay safe and well.
Bye, everybody.